March 8th. Or no, yeah, March 8th. Sorry, this, the agenda, just in case you're making notes on it, it says February 22nd on it.
Oh.
March 8th, 4:00 PM, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'll do a roll call of planning commission members present. Howard Trips, right here. Okay, Steve Boyle. Abby Dahlman.
Boyle here.
Great. Bryce, I believe I saw you on here as well. Bryce, are you there? He was on earlier. Oh, there he is, he's reconnecting. Erin Palin.
Here.
And Lupe Modila, you're here too.
Present, yep.
Okay, and then Lake County Commissioners, do we have Commissioner Munch?
She's out today, Heather.
Okay. Kayla's here.
Here.
And Commissioner Fiedler?
He was here. Yeah, he must have just dropped off. I'm sure that he'll try to rejoin as, as he can.
Okay. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda? Okay. Any staff updates? Okay.
So, you know, I think the only update that we have is, and kind of why we're bringing this to you tonight, is that we've got your preliminary meeting for public hearing for interview is our next meeting. So, big meeting, we need to have as many members present as possible so that we ensure we have a quorum for this very important stage of development.
Great. Yeah, that'll move us into new business. We're just gonna kind of do, you know, this was Anne's idea, I think it's great to do a subdivision process and review the process of how we go about the subdivision reviews. Let me switch screen share to the other document that Anne sent us. Anne, Anne, I don't know if you want to take the lead on it?
Sure, happy to do that. Yeah, I just thought that we've been having some real focused conversations. And so I thought it might be good to just kind of review ahead of time the upcoming process, answer any questions that you might have in general terms. And, you know, just, so I thought it seemed like a good opportunity to do that. Stop, raise your hand at any point if you have any questions. But I was just gonna kind of try to breeze through this a bit. I was hoping maybe tonight we would have a little bit shorter meeting. I don't know how the chairman feels about that, but we've had some long ones and I thought everybody might deserve to have a little bit of time. Oh, I just wanted to give a shout out to Abby. Congratulations to our new mom. And, and I hope that that's going well, Abby.
Congratulations.
Okay. I thought maybe she was unmuted for a minute. So I thought the first-
Oh, sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm here. Yep, you can hear her crying.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you, things are well.
I hope you're getting a little bit of sleep in there.
Just a little bit.
Right, I think lots of us remember that. So first, the first thing on the list is just what constitutes a minor or major and, and what's the difference? So, a minor subdivision is a division of land less than 35 acres that creates no more than four lots. So that's, that's the big difference. And just to kind of backtrack a little bit, Senate Bill 35 is the reason we have subdivision regulations. So Senate Bill 35 imposes or required communities to adopt subdivision regulations on the division of land of any parcels less than 35 acres. And from there, so they gave us through the zoning act the ability to adopt subdivision regulations. And then each jurisdiction has the latitude to create their own set of regulations, as long as they are compliant with statute. And so, from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, you may see some minor differences, but overall, they're, they're similar in what is asked of a developer when they come in. So the biggest difference, there's two big differences about minor and major. One is the size, the other is the process. So for a minor subdivision, we only have one public hearing. We don't go through a sketch preliminary and final plat. We expect the applicant to basically condense all three of those into one hearing, if you can imagine, right? So, it's not, it's not necessarily an easier lift because of trying to condense all three phases into a single hearing. So by the time a minor subdivision comes to us, they need to have acquired their water supply. They need to, they need to be ready to put ink on paper and be ready to go to final plat. So, it is, it is maybe a lesser impact because of size, but all the work has to be done in a single application. So those are the, the big differences about a major and a minor. And so then that kind of leads into the stages of major subdivision. Major subdivision has three different applications. The first being sketch, that requires a joint public hearing. And sketch is just kind of referred to as the conceptual stage. Does this development make sense? Does it meet the criteria that we have outlined in the code? And does it need to be conditioned so that there are certain things the developer will concentrate on in preliminary? Preliminary is where the rubber hits the road. It's where all of the intricacies of development come into play. It's, you know, I think developers consider it the heaviest lift of all three, and it is all the technical aspects. It's the road design, it's the engineering, it's the geo hazards report, it's the erosion control, it's the construction documents, it's, it's everything. So preliminary is really, and that's what we're getting ready to look at in Angel View. So, this is gonna be, you know, takes some preparedness on our part to be able to consider where they're at at this stage in development. And then final, and, and there is a joint public hearing for preliminary. Final plat, the way our code is designed, does not come back to the planning commission. It goes directly to the board for assigning and acceptance of the, of the final plat. It is a negotiation of the subdivision improvement agreements. So that's the guarantee that the developer gives the county, the bonds, the letter of credit, whatever we've negotiated with the developer to ensure that the infrastructure is put in place. So it is, it is a negotiation of the contract with the developer to actually bring the subdivision online. And it is a signing of the final plat and recording of the final plat. So, final plat, under our code, does not have notice requirements. They don't have to post the site, they don't send out notices. There's no longer any public input taken. It is just the final kind of rubber stamp process. So the two aspects of subdivision that you will hear as a recommending body is subdivision or is sketch and preliminary. And I'll just take a quick just break there. Any questions about any of that? Thumbs up? All good, okay. I tend to talk fast, so just throw something in the chat or raise your hand if, if there's something. So as we get ready, next week, you can anticipate, my goal is to have to you, because this is a, you know, this is gonna be a big hearing, to have everything to you by Monday. You're going to need that kind of time to prepare and review all of the information that I'm gonna provide you. I'll provide you the staff report that just goes through and, and it is the body of evidence for, as we talk about communication, you are a part of a quasi judicial process, which means it's similar to a judicial process. There is a body of evidence, that's largely the staff report, and all the information that we'll provide you, all, I will provide you all of the referral agency comments, and then a consolidation of all that information into a big report for you. So that's the evidence of, of your package. Then the testimony will be the applicant, they will have an opportunity. The hearing will open with Heather giving, the chairman will give an opening statement, which is really nice, because a lot of people that, that the public that come to these hearings may not be familiar with the process, and so it's a really great opportunity. And she explains everything at the beginning of the meeting. So there's an opening statement that is read. And then the evidence part of the hearing is when staff gives the staff report and all the supporting documentation for that. And I will prepare, I will give all of that to you a week in advance. So, you will have had time to kind of digest that. If, when you receive those documents and you're going through things, if you have questions, please, it is not ex parte communication, and I'll go into a little bit more about that, for you to reach out and ask Paul and I specific questions about the information that we've provided you. If you receive something and you think, wow, this isn't making sense, or I want more explanation, or this is a concern for me, reach out to your staff, that's what Paul and I are, to support you into the board. And if you need more information, let us know. So that is absolutely appropriate, and we'd much rather have those conversations with you ahead of the public hearing. So, if something in there is challenging, or where you have a concern, please reach out to myself or Paul. And we will do our best to get more information before you are clarified. Ex parte communication, so once, we currently have the interview preliminary application in. So if you ever, and I think we did this, we had kind of a coaching session or an informational session at the beginning, whenever we seated the new board. But if any applicants or public or anybody reaches out to you to have a conversation about this hearing, you need to, you know, to refrain from having those conversations. So anything, and you can direct them to staff. Anybody, anybody that you hear from the public, anybody associated with file, if anyone reaches out to you to have a conversation about this prior to the hearing, please direct them to staff, and we will assist them, give them whatever information they have. Everything that we have is transparent. There's no reason for them not to have what we have, but it should come through us and not through you. It also makes sure that you're whole and you're able to vote on their file. So, you know, it's always good, you know, sometimes people are very anxious to tell you what side they're on. And just shoot them over to us so that you have secured your ability to vote on the file. So, once you've heard the evidence given to you by staff, then we go into testimony. The testimony is the applicant, and then Heather will run the meeting when, as it unfolds, and she'll open the public hearing, and then we'll take public comment. The public is able to ask questions, give their opinions, support, or be opposed to the application. And Heather will give the applicant time to rebut any, any questions or answer or comment, those, those comments from the public. Once the public hearing is closed, there is no more public input. So after that happens, then the board and the planning commission can ask as many clarifying questions as they would like. They can ask as many, you know, or they can, and also you will go into a very robust deliberation of talking about how you view things, your thoughts, your concerns. You can ask staff whatever you would like. And, and I'll ask, Heather is, is very good at running this portion and knowing, you know, at what point to kind of, now, things kind of organically happen, but she's very good at knowing how to have the leadership in, in those processes. And then you will stay together, the board, the planning commission and the board of county commissioners will stay together up until the time the planning commission is ready to consider making a motion. So when it is time, and everyone feels as though they've had their questions asked, then the board of county commissioners retire from the public hearing, and they leave. And then the planning commission goes into a discussion, a, a motion typically is made, and then there's discussion on the motion, a vote on the motion, potentially a second motion, until we get to a quorum and a majority vote on the motion that's on the table. That then becomes a recommendation statement of motion that staff takes to the board of county commissioners, typically the following week for action, a decision or a ruling by the board to either approve, deny, or approve with conditions. But the board of county commissioners will not be present while you are making your motion. That is kind of the unique situation, that we have a single hearing process in Lake County, and that just kind of outlines it. So when we go, when staff goes to the board the following week, generally, it just kind of depends on if there's a fifth week in the month. Then, we are, the, the planning commission is welcome to come to the board meeting, if they would like. When that happens to, to clarify or add any clarity to the motion for the board of county commissioners, staff will bring the motion forward and give an interpretation of how the planning commission arrived at it. But we always encourage, if you would like to join the board of county commissioners meeting, to add hands-on clarity or direct clarity, you absolutely can do that. And then they act on it. So that's the evidence, testimony, findings, ruling, and decision. The findings that have to be made for approval are the approval criteria. You will find them in the staff report. But they are the things like, does this proposal align with the comprehensive plan? Does, is there spatial efficiency? Is there, you know, there's an environmental approval, there's, so there are findings that have to be made. So your motion and your, and your recommendation has to have a basis on the approval criteria. Heather will talk about that in the opening statement, and it'll be in the staff report for you to review. So you'll know specifically the basis that you have to have to find for the rulings or for the findings for the approval criteria. And I think that, that really is it in, in a nutshell. We are going to be hearing a subdivision application, which means that we are looking for code compliance. It's a little different than a planned unit development application where we have some negotiability, because a developer is asking us to create their own zoning. And so during, on that basis, we have the ability to negotiate a bit with the developer. So we're not in that situation. We are looking for code compliance directly to the subdivision regulations and the zone district regulations. And that, I think, sums up my very long-winded explanation. So I'm happy to take questions, or Heather to add anything. She is far more seasoned than I am at this, and so if you want to add anything, Heather, or if anyone has any questions.
No, I think, I mean, I think you did a great job, but that's also coming from somebody who deals with the process. So definitely those of you who haven't had an opportunity to go through this yet. And obviously, there's gonna be, you know, things that make sense here, and then as soon as we're in the meeting, you're like, what is going on? So, you know, feel free, you're allowed in that moment to raise your hand and stop and say, hey, just for procedure, how does this work, how is this gonna go? I think the biggest stress, stressed point here is, or one of the biggest ones is that if there are questions or things you think of that you want to ask, do it before public comment, if it's possible, or before a public hearing ends, if possible. Because a lot of times I've seen people hold on to questions, and they're like, well, I just wonder if the developer is gonna do X, Y, Z. Well, at that point, the public hearing portion is closed, and there is no more presenting facts. So, that would be my biggest takeaway is to just, when, you know, we're going through any of these subdivision processes, or really any public hearing for that matter, just keep in mind that we can technically ask staff things that they could then go and ask the applicant, but it's not, you know, it's kind of frowned upon. So I think the, the, the best process, obviously, is to get everything vetted in that open public hearing portion of the meeting. So, that's the, that's one big point. And then another just is that, especially with subdivisions, and especially with the way that things are a little bit crazy right now in Leadville in general, we just have to keep coming back to what we're allowed to be judging the application on versus maybe personal opinions on how things should or shouldn't be, whether subdivision should or shouldn't be here, those kinds of things. Like we're, we can, as long as that, those ideas fall within the comp plan, we can absolutely use the comp plan as, you know, something to point to ways that we don't feel like it fits. But just keep that in mind as well, just that we have to, it's hard at times, but you have to kind of keep that more objective, okay, how does this fit our comp plan? How does that, how does it fit our LDC? So, that's my two cents. Anne, does staff provide recommendations for approval or denial?
So we have, we used to, and we discovered that it, it actually, so what, what I actually do now is I give two recommendations. I give recommendations of a motion. I don't give recommendation for approval or denial. I give a recommended motion for either. So that when the planning commission determines, you know, what, what the majority feels is the right answer, they, they, there is a drafted motion with findings that would support that motion. So I don't, I no longer provide the staff. I think that it, I think that it, it feels more organic and it feels more transparent to allow the process to really vet what, which, which motion is more appropriate.
Yeah, and to add to that a little bit, you know, I think there was an idea in several instances where, you know, the applicant felt defeated before they even got to the table, because staff had a recommendation. So instead, we've worked with staff to make sure that their staff report is, you know, and they do an excellent job with the staff report of, this is where they meet the things that we have to look at during the application process, and here's the things they don't meet. Here are the things that we find questionable about their application, and things that maybe you should consider. But then that way, it's, you know, it's up to, it's up to the planning commission to say, yeah, we agree that that's a relevant thing, and hey, what's, you know, how can we compromise to make that, mitigate that issue, or what have you. Whereas I think before, when it was like, hey, they didn't meet this, this, and this, so we have to recommend denial, the applicant felt like there was no chance to really have a, have a hearing. So that's kind of why we moved away from that, if that makes sense. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I would just add to Heather that, and, or, or a recommendation for approval, when there's a lot of public opposition, also makes the public feel like, oh, you know, Lake County feels as though, just based on maybe the recommendation within the conditioned approval of, you know, conditions, that, right, the decision's already been made. So either the applicant or the public tend to feel, if it's contained within the staff report, then that's, that is a statement made by the, the entire county. And, and so that perception, we want to absolutely avoid.
Anybody else have any questions?
One, one other thing I would just mention is that, you know, we live in a small town where every, a lot of people tend to know each other. And if ex parte communication happens, don't immediately stress, you know, do your best to mitigate it, but it can be cured by sharing the same exact information with all your other members. So, there is a, a point during the hearing that you can cure ex parte communication by sharing exactly the information that was shared with you, so that all of the other members have it. And that is a method by which if those, that oops happens, you can make yourself still eligible to be able to participate in the vote if you can cure those conversations and share with the group the basis of the communication, so that everyone has the same, same exact knowledge. So there is, there is an opportunity, and you want to try to stay away from that happening, but certainly if it happens, reach out to Heather, reach out to staff to say, hey, I think I've got an ex parte situation that I need to cure. Can, can you make sure that, that there's an opportunity in the hearing to do that? Or, or let staff know, and we'll make sure that, you know, that we give Heather some direction, hey, there might be an opportunity that, that a member would like to try to cure an ex parte situation. You're awesome, right? You're excited for this hearing? The other thing is, did any, have any of you been able to go to the Rocky Mountain Land Juice, any of the sessions yet? Not yet. They're all recorded, so you can see, and you can view them whenever it is convenient. But there was one just recently on Zoom meetings and due process, which was super interesting. So if you get time to listen to it, you might want to, because it did have some interesting considerations of ensuring due process for applicants on a Zoom platform. I think that based on what we heard, we would encourage you, the day of the hearing, to make sure that you go ahead and turn your cameras on, that facial expressions and reactions are something that is kindly, widely thought to be something that an applicant should be able to gauge and have knowledge of. So, my takeaway from, from that is that there's, they're still trying to figure out and how long we may be using a Zoom platform for all of our public hearings. I, I don't think we've quite identified yet. But it was interesting to hear from kind of a legal standpoint and some different, you know, takes on how a Zoom platform supports and doesn't support the, the, an applicant getting due process. So, I would just encourage you on our next meeting for this hearing to have your cameras on and, and, you know, just be prepared for that. And if you get an opportunity to watch it, it's, I can't remember the exact title of it, but I think you'll find it pretty quick, because it, it makes reference of Zoom platform for, for public hearing process. So.
After the public hearing portion, will we just exit the Zoom meeting and then re-enter a different one? Will there be like two separate links in two weeks?
That's a great, that's a great question. So, the only, the only members of the audience that need to leave after the public hearing closes and is the, well, the board of county commissioners are the only members of the hearing that there is a point in the meeting that they, they must leave. And that's based on that the planning commission should make their motion under no duress and feeling like they're freely making their motion. So there is this thought that the board members could influence or have an influence on the recommendation of the planning commission. So the planning commission should make their motion free of any outside influence. And that's, that's largely why they leave. But everyone else can stay. The applicant can hear all of your- The applicant can hear all of your deliberation. They can hear the basis of why you made the motion. They can hear what your recommendation is and so can the public. So everyone, the whole process is completely open and transparent. Um, it is only the board that leaves for the final portion of the hearing when the planning commission makes their motion. Um, oh, thank you, Erin. It, the name of the, um, Zoom discussion is Legal Ethics in Zoom, Digital Participation in the Land Use Process. Thank you, Erin. It was great. So great question, Bryce, and, and something I think that, um, I learned when I came on board too. I kind of thought at some point the applicant would leave and there would be this big aha moment. But they, they, they can stay, they can hear, um, the reasoning behind your motion and they're able to hear all of that.
And what are we going to do about, so normally when we're in person, right? We have these big courtrooms full of, full of everybody. There's a clipboard that goes around and documents all of public who are at the meeting. And, you know, just like this evening, I think we have a few members of the public here. Some have names, some do not show up on the Zoom. So how are we documenting? How are we, how do we plan to impl, or I guess incorporate that into the meeting? Uh, because it seems like something I should probably have people all write into chat. Or I don't know, I don't know what our, what our plan is there. You maybe have already dealt with that.
I have not dealt with that and that is a very, very good question. I think that we considered this like, like a month ago and, and I am so glad you brought that up because I would be ill-prepared. Um, so I, my first thought would be that we do a roll call of public and then, you know, we kind of have to watch for, because I don't think that we want to, the only other thing that we could do is gauge being able to admit people in, like having IT, um, allow people in as they arrive and, and, um, and then alerting you as chair that we've had another public. So I think maybe we do a roll call at the beginning, um, that if you're present. Oh, Kayla has, Kayla has an idea. Okay.
All right, Anne, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No.
We've actually been trying to fine tune this a little bit as well for our, um, county commissioner meetings. And so, um, something that other counties have done is, um, asked people that would like to speak on the topic to send an email to staff prior to the meeting so that they, um, staff has kind of an idea of how many people to expect to speak during the public comment, portion of a public hearing. Um, but then if they don't have the ability to email you prior to the meeting, um, we just ask people to identify themselves, um, and rename themselves in the participant screen. And if they do want to speak publicly, we give them, um, one staff person or one of the, the board members, um, that they private message that person and let them know that they do want to make a comment during public comment.
That makes sense?
I think that sounds great. So what my action, um, item from that takeaway, if everybody, um, if this sounds good, is to immediately get something up on the website, um, that encourages reaching out to staff ahead of time. Um, and then having, just like Kayla said, that backup, that, um, Heather, you know, asked for that participation, um, during the start of the meeting, maybe after the opening statement or prior to. And then, um, and yeah, they could absolutely private message and then we can, because what, after the staff report, um, is delivered, you know, staff can absolutely be helping manage, um, the public hearing process. I think that, I think this is really critical and we should expect, um, a lot of public, um, input during, um, this upcoming hearing. There was a sketch plan and so that's what I'm basing that on is that, um, for anybody that didn't, wasn't present for our sketch, we had the courtroom completely packed. To give you an idea, so we, um, this, this file has been one that's had large attendance. And so, um, we had to move it from the, the commissioner's room up to the courtroom. So these are really good things for us to be talking about. Thank you so much, Heather. I would have, um, probably been thinking about this a week past now and struggling. So it's really great. Thank you so much. We'll get, um, a plan going to encourage, um, having them alert us. There's also different, um, people that have reached out and wanted to be kept up to date on this file. So I will send out instructions to them to try to kind of, um, cause some efficiencies in this or, or, uh, provide some efficiencies so that maybe it won't be as big a lift, um, at the time of the hearing. But I think that's a great idea. Um, we can just have, um, Heather, you can just direct them to private message and we can be providing that to you directly. Um, also we'll have to try to get them registered, you know, with contact information. So through private message we'll be able to, is that what they were telling people, Kayla? Is that you could then, that we could obtain telephone numbers and email addresses?
Yeah. And I think too, um, when the city did the public hearing portion for like short-term rentals, um, Sarah Dallas limited the chat function so that there wasn't an open conversation happening, um, while the commission was having their, their public hearing. So you might want to, I would think that Sarah Dallas would be a really good resource to ask how they did that at the city as well. And then we can run it by our legal just to make sure that it, it sounds good and appropriate.
Great direction. I love it. Yeah, I absolutely will reach out to Sarah. I will share that, um, with you, Heather, uh, those outcomes, limit the chats. Um, absolutely, we don't want, um, we also have to be careful about that. Um, there's, because in, in the spirit of ex parte too, right? We want to make sure that one member isn't seeing something in chat. Not, not everybody's seeing it. So absolutely, we definitely want to be limiting those conversations to the process.
Max, I see a hand up.
Yeah, I just, um, wanted to say I, I do the same thing and I'm the chair of the Leadville Lake County Law Enforcement Community Board. Um, and it, I went over it with, with the sheriff and the chief and everybody agrees that it doesn't violate any laws, but, you know, especially with something like that board where things could get out of hand very quickly. Um, all the members of the public are muted and they can all talk to me on chat. And if it's something legitimate, then, you know, I'll call on them and they can say what it is they need to say. And that, that works much better than what happened at the beginning of the short-term rental thing where everybody started having a secondary chat conversation, um, next to the actual meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that's a great lesson to have learned and, uh, because that, that would be incredibly hard to manage.
Great. Any other questions out there? Kayla, is your hand just still up from before?
Oh, sorry, I can, I can lower it.
No, no worries. Anybody else got anything? All right. Uh, so Anne, you'll, you guys are planning to send that staff report out in the next week or so? And then we'll review and then meeting is on the 22nd. Um, if for any reason any, um, commission members can't come, please let Anne or staff or me or somebody know ASAP, um, just so that we know if we're going to be short, um, on people. All right, and I guess if that's all, entertain a motion to adjourn. I mean, unless anybody wants to keep meeting.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Bye.
All right, thank you, everybody. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thanks so much.
Have a good night.
Bye. Thank you, Anne.
Thank you.